Okay. We're ready to go. Welcome, everybody. First selectment to sorrow is going to give us her opening comments for our session today. This is a session for employers, people hiring, looking to hire staff. And this is a staffing resource event sponsored by the town of Trumbull and our partners.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. And I'd like to welcome employers, residents, and our panelists to this town hall meeting on staffing resources for employers. We've held several town hall meetings virtually over the past few years designed to get important information out to our businesses in a concise and convenient manner. This particular session will introduce companies looking for staff to agencies that can help as well as online resources and university career offices. We developed this session based on feedback from employers on the difficulty they are having finding employees across multiple industries and levels of employment. This effort is part of our commitment to the long-term recovery of our businesses in light of the impact of COVID-19. We have a full contact list for those tuning in for your follow-up purposes. Now I'd like to introduce the folks you'll be hearing from today. Panelists, if you could give a wave and a hello as I call your name. The workplace, Mike Morgan, Vice President. Engage Staffing, Andy Flanagan, Account Executive.
Everybody.
Connecticut Hires American Job Center, Rosa Dicker, Director of Business Services.
Good afternoon.
Small Business Development Centers, Joseph Ercolano, State Director.
Hi, everyone.
Bridgeport Regional Business Council, Trumbull Chamber of Commerce, Manufacturing and Production Workers, Dan Anafrio, President and CEO.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Kennedy Center, Joan Nassif, Marketing and Employer Relations Manager.
Hi.
Aging and Disability Services, and Nata Mendoza, Assistant Vocational Rehabilitation Counselor.
Hi, good afternoon.
Entry Point Staffing, Lisa Tella, Director.
Hello.
Today's presentation will be available for viewing from the town website and our community television station after we conclude. We are also on Facebook Live today. Those attending via Facebook Live will not be able to ask questions at the end of the program. For those participating by Zoom link, a question and answer will be held at the conclusion of the presentations. I will now turn the program over to Rena Baklar, Trumbull's Director of Economic and Community Development, and she will be our emcee for today and guide us through the agenda. Thank you, Rena, and thank you again, everyone, for attending.
Thank you for selectment to sorrow for those opening remarks and thanks to the panel for being with us today and those that are tuning in. We hope that you will learn about some new services and tips and job boards, et cetera, that will help you to access the talent pool you need to grow your business. And we hope that you will be able to follow up and ask questions at the end of the program. So you see the agenda today, we are going to go through a series of organizations and they're going to take a few minutes, two to three minutes, just to tell you what their organization offers to employers, the kinds of folks they have that are looking for jobs, some incentives perhaps that may benefit you as an employer when you're hiring. And they will, you will have their contact information again to follow up with after this event today. We also have some hiring tips for employers that we're going to have a discussion about. And we've assembled a series of hiring websites that you can access as an employer, some you may have heard about, but some you may not have heard about, that you can actually tap talent through those electronic websites. We've also assembled a university and college career office list for those employers who would like to be able to get directly in touch with colleges and universities about their jobs fairs and about their talent pools that are graduating and looking for work or looking for even summer work or part-time work during the year. So all of those things will be presented to you today and then a question and answer period at the end of the session. So please write your questions down and you'll have time to to address the group. The first person I'd like to introduce is from the Workplace Inc. Mike Morgan is the Vice President of the Workplace Inc. and he's going to talk to you about what they have to offer employers in terms of job seekers. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Rena. And I want to say thank you to you, Rena, and Gia and Bill, and certainly First Selectment to Sorrow, providing the workplace today. And to everybody on the call, in particular, the employers and businesses in the Trumbull area and for any of those outside. Let me first start by saying, everything that we do at the workplace is about preparing job seekers for employment opportunities. And I often say if I'm meeting with a business, if you need to hire one or 30 or more, you should certainly consider the workplace as a resource. Furthermore, the workplace is part of a large network. Many of our partners are on the call and are going to present today. And so it's not just about the workplace, but it's about the larger network, which ultimately for businesses is about getting you right-sized and growing your workforce. Who is the workplace? The workplace was established in 1983. And we are one of five workforce development boards in the state of Connecticut. We cover a region that spans 20 towns. And it ranges from Stratford down to 95 Corridor to Greenwich, up through Canaan, across the Beacon Falls and down the Route 8 Corridor. However, due to expansion, the workplace has grown. We now operate in multiple states and we have four offices located in Connecticut. We're headquartered in Bridgeport, Connecticut. We also have offices in New Haven, Waterbury, and Hartford. We have about 150 employees spanning the entire agency. And again, what we do is we prepare job seekers for employment opportunities. We do that through training, could be hard skills training, career coaching, and skills development. The cool thing about workplace is that we have a dedicated unit to work with you, the businesses, in our region and throughout Connecticut. We have more than 12 employer relations specialists that are out developing relationships with businesses and making connections with folks that come through our programming or through our network. Some of the individuals that are ready for work come with a wage coverage attachment. We call it a wage subsidy. You hire somebody from the workplace and we might be able to cover their wages for a period of time. Sometimes it ranges from four weeks up to eight weeks. We've also, I'm joined by, with Carmen Neves, who is an employer relation specialist and represents our young adult population. You're going to hear from Andy Flanagan next. Andy Flanagan is with an organization called Engage Staffing. Engage Staffing is a product, a birth child of our president and CEO, visionary Joe Carbone, who started this program in our business in 2014. So we also offer many different vehicles or outlets for any business that has hiring needs. I know earlier, Rena, you made note of a person that may be on the call interested in hiring an administrative professional. Plot from to employment, which has been seen on CBS 60 Minutes and has traveled nationally. We currently have just under 75 individuals in training. Will graduate in a few weeks and all of those people that are coming through that program are coming from backgrounds of the professional grade or professional level. So it is likely that we have somebody that has some administrative skills and we can make, we can make a referral. I get, I get job orders requisitions, lead and inquiries coming across my desk daily. My contact information Rena will share. If you have any questions or want to talk offline, please reach out to me at any time. At the workplace, we are always happy to help. Appreciate you having the workplace and having me as a guest speaker today. Thank you, Rena.
Thank you, Mike. That was terrific. I'd like to invite Andy Flanagan, Account Executive with Engage Staffing, to talk a little bit more about what Engage Staffing specifically has to help employers find staff. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Thanks, Rena. And thank you for selectmen to sorrow. I work with Mike. Mike is my boss. He mentioned a little bit about Engage. So to flesh that out a little more, Engage is a full-service, for-profit staffing recruiting agency and an extension of the workplace, as Mike mentioned. My role, which is important to employers like all of you, is to connect with you to help you succeed in finding the right candidate for your temp or temp to perm needs, direct hires, payrolling, or straight contract. We provide support for employment in several fields, including call center, customer service, accounting and bookkeeping, clerical and administrative, medical and non-medical healthcare positions. Many of our placements are currently in the manufacturing sector, light industrial. We also have service in construction and hospitality, warehousing and distribution. And currently, hoping that the spring weather will kick in, we're starting to see a big up, a major uptick in landscaping, tree services, pool services, things of that nature on the seasonal side of things. The thing that makes Engage unique is the strong partnerships that we have within the local workforce system. As Mike alluded to with Engage and many of the people that you're going to be hearing forthcoming. This provides us with access to more job seekers than your typical agency and it provides you, the employer, with better rates. So to sort of conclude what we're about is Engage is, if you, if you seek us out, you'll find that we're incredibly professional, honest, and we will be able to get your positions filled due to our extensive networking and our association with the workforce system. So if you're struggling to fill positions in any capacity or any of the business sectors that I've mentioned before, Engage should really be part of the conversation. And we look forward to helping you move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I always like to say that Andy is also a Trumbull resident, so that's terrific. And, and we hope that folks will follow up with Andy as well after the program. So Lori Lynn Chatlos could not be with us today because she is actually hosting a hiring event for an employer that needed some help finding staff. But we thought it was important to put up the Connecticut Department of Labor Business Services and all of the resources that they have. And we are blessed in this region, I have to say, to have Lori Lynn here. She is fantastic. I've known her for a number of years. And she works so closely with employers. So please, after this, this presentation again is available to everybody on our website. You'll get all that information today. And these services are things that you can tap into. Now, we're going to have, our next person that's going to speak is specifically going to address the Connecticut Hires aspect of the Department of Labor Services and the Southwest American Job Center and how those, that, that organization can help you to fill your needs. So Rosa Dicker, Director of Business Services, is going to talk to us right now. And Rosa, we have on this particular sheet an important note that Lori Lynn asked you to stress, right? That the Connecticut hires. Are you there, Rosa?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. So I'll leave that to you.
Okay. So again, good afternoon and thank you, Rena. So in the absence of Lori, I am going to discuss CT hires. For those who do not know, CT hire is online application. It is a website that has been developed for the job seeker and the employer. So as it obtains to the employer, it's a complete employment tool. It allows the employers to post jobs on the site. It also allows you to search for your candidates by identifying your requirements for the job openings that you have versus what the candidates have. So you're doing a match between your requirements, the candidate's skills and experience and education. So that right there, it allows you to select those candidates to have the opportunity to meet with them for interviews. The website also allows you to create virtual interviews. It's a great site for doing that. It allows you to also, with regards to posting jobs, it allows you to maintain the, your jobs as far as seeing how many candidates have applied for the work. It's a great tool. We recommend it for employers to use as well as our job seekers. If you're interested in knowing how to use the application, there's actually videos online for employers as well as job seekers to assist you on how to actually use the application, maneuver through the application. If there's any questions or concerns that you have, you can either reach out directly to Lori Lynn or to myself. Now, I also have Rena, if anyone has any questions, I have handouts on how to actually register online for employers that I can send that directly to you and the employers can have that. So again, it's a great tool to post your jobs. If you're unable to do that, Lori or myself can assist you with posting your jobs online for CT hires. Great tool.
That, that's wonderful, Rosa. And the fact that it's free too is always a nice perk as employers. Particularly our small businesses are oftentimes on a tight, you know, budget. So that's, that's great.
So correct. Everything that you're hearing today with regards to the American Job Center, our partnership, our services are free. Our services are free. So who we are at the American Job Center. The American Job Center, we are a, we are a, I want to say, we are partnership with Department of Labor. We also, all of our services are funded by the Department of Labor. We are located in approximately every state, every state. That's why we're called the American Job Center. The services that we offer, so I am business services. My unit, we work directly with employers. I have a unit of job developers. Their role is to meet the employers within our local communities, develop partnerships, relationships, seek the needs of what the employers are looking for. We provide recruitments to assist the employers. Our recruitments are customized based on your needs. We work with our employers to be creative. We provide specialized recruitment for transportation, retail. We also provide online virtual recruitment. We've had recruitments in the evenings. We face where employers were local, more of the small business, could not provide time during the day to have recruitment. So we've offered recruitment during the evenings from five to seven. So we work with you so that we can help you. Also, we offer our location. If you're looking to have a job fair on site, we will offer that to you on site on our premises. Again, it's totally free. We also will assist you with customizing your hiring, your hiring. So we'll work directly with your HR director to assist them with hiring. Currently, right now, my team, we are doing interviewings for an employer. He's unable to provide that. So we provide the services. We'll do the actual interviewing. We will assist you with reviewing resumes. We will also assist your, your HR director with any other services that they're seeking. If you're also interested in apprenticeship, you may have the need for some to want to train them. We have that service. We can assist you with doing apprenticeship. So what are the things that we do? With regards to our talent pool, we have a variety of talent here at the American Job Center. The individuals that we have are coming from various different backgrounds. We provide them with training. So the training that we offer here at the American Job Center, it's training that's based on the needs of our Connecticut employers. So it's based on each of the regions. Some of the trainings that we have that could fit your need, we have manufacturing, CNA. We have medical assistance as well as, we all know, the big growing market, CDL. So we offer CDL training. We also offer clerical training. We offer customer service training. We make our talent pool ready to work. We provide them with complete job readiness, how to get the job, how to obtain the job. That's the best thing. Get the job. Now you need to retain the job. So we teach them all of those skills through mock interviews. We also offer special grants. These grants are offered to the employer as well as the job seeker. It's a marriage of the job seeker and the employer. The special grants, the last we have is the CARES Act where the employers, you would hire an individual for six months. And during that six-month period, we will reimburse you the payment of the individuals that you hire. But the end result is that the individual is trained and if they're fit your needs, that you retain them so you can get your business growing. And again, all of our service that we offer, they're completely free, completely free. So again, it's a partnership with everyone that you see here on the phone. We all partnership and we're very closely together.
Wow, Rosa, thank you for that. And, and I did, I knew a lot of what you did, but I didn't know everything and it's really exciting to listen to. And the fact that you have some extra funding for grants to help employers to hire and that job seeker to get the opportunity, I think that's terrific. And I hope folks are going to follow up after this and take advantage of that. So thank you. I'd like to now introduce Joseph Ercolano. He is the State Director of the Small Business Development Centers in our area. I know he's going to talk a little bit about what, what the Small Business Development Centers can offer employers. But I want to just mention that, that I use as the Director of Economic and Community Development. I refer a lot of our small businesses to the Small Business Development Center for support, particularly people that are starting their businesses or looking to grow their business. They oftentimes have a lot of resources that are free to help those businesses grow. So I know that's a little outside of what we're talking about and I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, Joe. But, but I just want you to know that, that like all of these other resources, I use your resource as a professional to help our businesses on a regular basis. So thank you for what you do.
No, thank you, Rena. And thank you for Select Woman to sorrow and all the partners on the call. As, as speakers have been saying, we're all working together on behalf of business, particularly small business in our case. And so as the State Director, I'm here filling in today for Stephen Samaya. He would be our regional, one of our regional advisors that you might be getting services from if you're a small business. And our services are no cost. We're funded by the Department of, United States Small Business Administration and the Department of Economic Development in the state. And we're housed at the University of Connecticut. And our purpose is to help with professional advice. We don't have volunteers. We're paid employees on things like startup assistance, on your business plan development or your business strategy development. We do a lot of work on financial analysis and help you to take a financial perspective as you look through managing your, your business. We help a lot with access to capital. One of the key factors we're judged on and measured on by the Small Business Administration is helping companies access debt or equity capital. We do marketing and research work and we could provide industry reports showing trends and dynamics going on in a particular market. We do a lot of work on export consulting, succession planning, sale of your business, purchase of a business. And of course, we do, lately, we've been doing a lot of work on disaster and disruption planning. It's not limited to COVID-19, but, but just in general, preparing for things that could disrupt a business and your operations and your, your processes, including cybersecurity, which is a growing need for small business. But today's topic is about hiring and finding talent. And we do help in some ways on that. We, we don't post jobs. We don't provide employees. We don't have all the resources available through the other partners on this call. But we can help you ensure your job descriptions are well-written. We can provide guidance on compliance with certain state laws and requirements. Help you with strategies for onboarding your talent and keeping your talent, compensation structures and employee retention. I would say that our major contribution in this area is to help you think through the bigger picture as you're looking to bring on talent, retain talent. Think about it from a financial perspective and an operational perspective. And that's what our advisors are equipped to do is, is to give you that advice. And of course, we can make referrals all day long to other partners that we might know of that could help in other ways. So there's a way to access us. As I said, we're no cost. We're free. We're confidential. And the best thing is to go to our website, ct sbdc yukon.edu and get started with us. We're here to help. Thank you.
Terrific, Joe. Thank you again. That was, that was excellent. I'd like to now introduce Dan Anafrio, who is the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Bridgeport Regional Business Council and the Trumbull Chamber of Commerce. And he can talk to you about specific, about manufacturing and production workers. He's been doing, actually leading a lot of great work in this area to make sure that that part of our workforce is available to our, our manufacturing firms as they grow in our economy, particularly right now. So Dan, please take it from here. There you are, Dan. I see you now.
Thanks, Rena. And, and good afternoon, everyone, again. And I just want to echo the other comments and thank the town of Trumbull, specifically for Select Woman, Vicki DeSoro, for Rena and her office and her staff that are putting this very valuable conversation together. You know, you could see as we go through the program here, there's just so many resources. And sometimes as a business owner, you know, it's mind-boggling like, oh, where do I begin? And how do, how do, you know, how do I get started with identifying my employment needs? And you can see on this call that we all work together in some capacity or another. It's a great group of folks that are on this call and resources for your business. So as Rena mentioned, I represent the Bridgeport Regional Business Council as well as locally here in Trumbull, the Trumbull Chamber of Commerce. We are makeup of three chambers, Bridgeport, Stratford, and Trumbull. And, you know, in aggregate, you know, we make up the Bridgeport Regional Business Council. And we provide a lot of no-cost, low-cost services for businesses. It's like anything else, you know, the more you participate, the more you get back. But it's a network of 600-plus businesses. And, you know, what's great about it is our, these communities come together, these businesses come together to share amongst their peers and a variety of formats and forums, their challenges, and we try to facilitate those conversations as any way that we can. So as Rena pointed out, I like to focus a little bit on manufacturing. And, you know, some folks have asked, you know, why manufacturing? And frankly, you know, you may not know this, but it's pretty astonishing. You know, you look at Fairfield County and we've identified, you know, close to 300 manufacturers throughout Fairfield County. If you look at our region here, the Greater Bridgeport region, there's well over 100 manufacturers within our region. And you break that down a little further, you know, even when you eliminate Sikorsky Aircraft, who obviously is, you know, the larger employer in the region. You know, that, this sector, manufacturing, without Sikorsky still employs over 20,000 people throughout the region. So it's a significant sector. It's something that, you know, is very passionate to me personally, but, but obviously is a big part of our economic engine here in Greater Bridgeport. So we've been forming what we're calling the Southwest Connecticut Manufacturing Partnership. We've got several CEOs and presidents of some of the leading manufacturers in our region coming together to help identify their workforce issues. And you may not think of it if you're a manufacturer listening to this call, but there are programs and talent from the variety of educational services and training support partners that we have identified in the area that offer programs to fill the gap, you know, because there is a challenge, particularly in this sector, but throughout the region. So, you know, we're continuing the conversation. We're evolving the conversation specifically around manufacturing. And we're looking forward to continuing to lead this particular effort with our partners, our support partners that you see here on the screen. And as always, you know, we are open organization and any way that we can help you. And as always, you know, we are open organization and, and any way that we can help you, there's a variety of ways for you to get connected with other peers. But more importantly, from a business retention and employee retention perspective, we have a lot of services for your employees. Because if you invest in them, they're likely to stay, right? So, and that's our goal is to keep our employees employed, grow more jobs and, and keep our young talent here in, in Greater Bridgeport. So thank you, Rena.
Thank you, Dan. And I just want to note the list on this slide and the next few slides are places that have bona fide manufacturing programs within Connecticut and in our area that employers can tap and Dan can be a liaison if, if necessary to, to any of that information. So thank you, Dan. And the other thing, Dan, I wanted to note, because I, you've helped me in this. I, I serve on several nonprofit boards and they were looking for human resources consulting consultants in the private sector. And Dan has a list of members that are human resource consultant types of firms within the chamber that he's always able to give me their names and I can send them on to folks that are looking for those services. So thank you again, Dan. Now we're going to move on to the Kennedy Center, which we are very proud of here in Trumbull because they have their headquarters here and operations here. And I can tell you that the town of Trumbull has also hired through the Kennedy Center for certain types of maintenance services. And we've had workers on site for other purposes. So Joan is with us. I don't see her.
I'm here.
There she is. Joan, Joan Nasif is here with us and she will be talking about what they have to offer employers. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you. Thank you, Rena. And thank you for Select Woman and distinguished panelists. As with many of you, we are, there's no cost to work with us. And we develop strong partnerships with employers as other agencies do to learn about their employment needs and to match the best candidate. At any given time, we might have up to 400 individuals looking for work. And we span from lower Fairfield County to, through Fairfield County. We go into the Waterbury area and we go up the shoreline as well. We have individuals, you know, the, the talent pool is broad. We, we fulfill positions in hospitality, retail, food service, manufacturing and office. We've had individuals, we've placed individuals in customer service, public relations, even grant writing. One of the things that we offer, we, we basically, many of the individuals we work with have some type of barrier to employment. So we help companies diversify their workforce. And particularly if, if manufacturers or different businesses have government contracts, we can assist with that diversification. Many of the individuals we work with are looking for part-time work, but some are looking for full-time. And often we get funded to have individuals try out a position, which, which most managers love because you get to see if they're a good fit and prior to hiring. One of the other services we offer is a support staff that will help ensure if there's any, any barriers or any struggles, we basically help smooth that out during the transition to full-time or, or steady employment. And we can be called in at any point if there's any kind of issue, which most of the individuals that we have placed have been in their positions for years. So we have a dependable pool of candidates, which is great. Recently, as Rena had said, we also have businesses and several of the manufacturers and local businesses have reached out to us, basically have been outsourcing. We have a warehouse, a very large warehouse with two large bays now located in Bridgeport at Bridgeport Innovation Center. And we have secured, we work with local manufacturers. We do some of the repair work, fix some of the problems that they may have. We have a partnership with an engineering firm that works on lighting and we do value-added work. And we handle their shipping and receiving also and their logistics. We have a PPE business that we have been doing fulfillment work on. We also have worked with a company that has been on Shark Tank and we build their point-of-purchase displays. Those are, those are options that are, you do pay for, but they, we do a great job. We're very competitive and we basically meet your turnaround and do whatever we can to meet your needs. Some of the other business enterprises we have in the Greater Trumbull area have been the landscaping and grounds maintenance, which Rena mentioned. We're moving into the spring cleanup, so feel free to reach out to me for that. And also the facility, facilities and janitorial services. We have a catering service and I, I will say that our chef is pretty awesome. And I would suggest or recommend that you try us out. We offer breakfast and lunch menus that can be picked up and/or delivered. And you have my information. Feel free to reach out to me at any time and I'd be happy to go over what your needs are and how we can help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. That was wonderful. I'd love to introduce now Anita Mendoza. She's an Assistant Vocational Rehabilitation Counselor with the Besby also and the Aging and Disability Services. So Anita, I'm looking for you on my gallery. Where are you?
Hi, how are you?
I keep, I keep losing people here.
I know. I actually have you in a little square on my screen. So thank you one for inviting me as I represent the Department of Aging and Disability Services for Bureau and Education and Services for the Blind. Our department actually works with folks that have visual impairments, legal blindness, and we help individuals obtain and maintain employment. We, we have a caseload. We have several regional counselors throughout Connecticut as we are a state service. We pre-screen our qual-, you know, candidates in, in making sure that we're matching them with the appropriate career fields and jobs. We also provide for employers reimbursement for paid internships and on-the-job training from up to 130% of someone's wages for 12 weeks. As Joan mentioned, she's actually, Kennedy Center is one of our contracted services along with Goodwill Industries, Ability Beyond Disability and other nonprofit agencies that help us provide services, vocational services, employment services to local employers. So Try Before You Hire, which is a no-cost service to actually pre-screen someone before you permanently hire that individual, which is a great service. Their wages are paid up to about 60 hours for an employer to actually observe someone with a disability, whether it be schizophrenia or autism. For me, it's blindness, legal, legal blindness. Also, we provide on-the-job job support, which is a job coach, whether it be through Kennedy Center or Goodwill Industries or Ability Beyond Disability or Independent Living Solutions. So we actually pay for an individual to have assistance to become acclimated to the job site. That's no cost to the employer as well. We also provide disability consultation services. So legal blindness, not a lot, not a lot of employers know what our clients can do. So we actually come in at no cost to provide a task analysis to see what jobs or what job tasks are appropriate for an individual at that business. If an employer is interested in hiring someone with a legal visual impairment, legally blind individual. We also provide purchases of adaptive equipment when, when applicable. So CCTVs, portable video magnifiers, any software which is for legal blindness, you know, Zoom text, Jaws, which is a screen reader. We also provide and purchase at no cost to the employer. Well, benefits for hiring an individual with disabilities is also worker, work opportunity, opportunity tax credits. You know, having your, your workforce inclusive, which is also good. And also hiring somebody with disabilities is, you know, they're reliable and they have a higher job retention rate. I actually forgot to put this. This is actually a major service for us that we provide to employers is job retention services. Where if that individual's working for you and they have lost some of their eyesight, we would come in and help them maintain employment with all the services that I have here, which is disability consultation services and purchases of adaptive equipment. So, yes.
Anita, can you just explain the QR code?
The QR code is, it's actually brand new to us as the state, we're, we're a little bit antiquated. But we actually were able to come up with a QR code to go directly to our website.
Great. So thank you for including that in the presentation.
Yes, you're welcome.
We've all gotten very familiar with QR codes since the pandemic. If we want to visit, visit a restaurant menu, I think you have to, you had to master this. So terrific. Thank you so much. Next, and certainly not least, is Lisa Tella, the Director of Entry Point Staffing. And she's our last provider before we go into hiring tips and websites and so forth. So Lisa.
Hey, hello, everyone. I'm here to talk about Entry Point Staffing. Very close to my heart, Entry Point Staffing started in the middle of the pandemic and we've been very busy pairing people released from incarceration or people who've had justice involvement in the past, whether someone was justice involved 10 weeks ago or 10 years ago. We can still help them. We match them with second chance friendly places of employment. And right now we've got 16-plus companies and organizations that we're working with. The range of industries that we serve ranges from manufacturing, warehouse, food companies, municipal governments, transportation, landscaping and janitorial, you name it, we can probably staff it. The range of people that we place is just as wide. We have, we serve people with, place people with, from anything from minimal training and minimal education to MBAs from the top business schools. So the range of people who go to prison is immense. So for employers, that means the range of talent you have to select from is immense too. We started this be, agency through Career Resources because lack of access to economic viability once people get out of prison has been the main cause of recidivism. Nationally, the figure is 80%. There's, in other words, if you get released from prison, there's an 80% chance you're going back. Happily for us, that figure has been zero since we started our agency. No one who's worked with us has gone back to prison and we're, we're happy to say people are, are working and happy. For companies, Entry Point Staffing offers the Try Before You Buy option, which has been very helpful. If someone, for some reason, doesn't work out, there's no harm, no foul. We can either replace the person or go our separate ways. But happily, that's, that's very, very rarely been the case. For employers, the cost is essentially the same as what you pay now when you hire someone. We cover the salary, the workers' comp, state and federal taxes. And you receive one weekly bill from us for that worker. The worker is vetted through not just Entry Point, but also through our STRIVE National Work Readiness Program Filter. They receive case management and coaching for the life of their association with us. We don't just toss people in jobs and forget them. They get a lot of support along the way. And that's sort of been the secret sauce to our, our success is the, the support that we give people and the careful matching of the person with the job. Let's see. You can convert our staffers anytime if you'd like. There are significant tax breaks if you do so, or you can keep them as a long-term temp. A lot of times what we've had happen is people just absolutely love the job that our workers are doing and they want them for their, for their own, to make, for their own staff. So we're, we're, we're happy to see them move on to this next step on their journey. Most of all, we are happy to be a force for change in the criminal justice reform world. And we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Lisa. Now we're going to move to some hiring tips. Fred Petrosi is Chairman of the Trumbull Chamber of Commerce and he's Vice President of the Banking Center at Webster Bank here in Trumbull. A very, very active member of our community. And he's going to talk from his perspective as a businessperson, leader of the chamber on hiring tips. Fred?
Hi, Rena. And thank you, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. What a great event we're having. I hope everybody on the event is taking a few things from it. The first thing I like to talk about for hiring tips is treating candidates like customers. And I truly believe that if you treat your candidates more like a customer than an application, get to know the person you're interviewing and potentially hiring, you'll find the right person the first time around. The second bullet point I like to reference is to use your employee referral program to your benefit. This is so important. If you have somebody that's already working for you, to tap them, to ask them if they have any friends or family members would be a great resource to use. The third is to use social media to your advantage. This is a time when social media is your friend. A lot of networking can happen through social media and we encourage you, from the chamber perspective, to use social media to your advantage. The fourth event or the fourth, fourth bullet point is to invest in your current employees first and then backfill their roles. Those are, what a great opportunity that there is right there for everyone on this panel and in the audience to just consider. The fifth and one of the most important is do not hire for task, hire for the purpose. There's a lot of applicants out there. Make sure, again, you're hiring the, the right person the first time around. Get to know those candidates and hire for the right position with the right person. And then sixth, I, I think it's so important from the chamber perspective and from everybody's perspective to have a clear and formal onboarding process to make that new hire feel warm and welcome when they come onboard. To have a plan in place for maybe training or onboarding specifically. What a great opportunity to network and get to know your new hire. Thank you again for having me, everyone on the panel and, and being here today. What a great event.
Thank you, Fred. That, those were great tips. And, and I agree because not only is it about finding somebody, you want to keep them. And, and, and you know, that initial experience they have coming onboard really makes a difference. So. Now we have some, some information on job boards for employers that you can use and check into. Joe Urcolano is still on, I believe, Joe. And then we have also a university list. If you want to just touch on those quickly, Joe?
Yeah, absolutely. So Stephen and others put this together and I think he's done a great job. This is a listing of different boards that you can use. Keep in mind that many of them have their specialties. So for example, LinkedIn is listed under a general category because it has job listings for all levels and industries, but usually it's used for senior positions. So as you go through these boards, you know, investigate a little bit, see how they fit for your particular needs. And they do have different packages for employers and they have different costs. Some have free options, others do not. So more homework you need to do before you jump into one and think it's going to fulfill all your needs. It's important to have an idea of where you're most likely to be successful in finding and hiring a great candidate that fits your needs in addition to looking at the cost per posting. So it sometimes it takes some experience with a particular source. And if you like it, keep using it. If you don't, move on and try something else. Final point, CT Hires is the official job board of the state and it's completely free. It has some very robust tools to search and filter results. It's worth registering and getting your business profile set up so that when you need it, you can post very quickly.
Great. Thank you, Joe. That's terrific. If we can switch now, this, this list, this university and college talent office list is something that my office maintains and Gia, our, our very wonderful assistant. is something that my office maintains and Gia, our, our very wonderful assistant here today helped to update this. I had an intern do it a few years ago. It's been updated recently. It talks about all of the colleges and universities in the area and how to reach their career office and how they, and where they post different types of, where you can post different types of jobs with them and so forth. So this, all of this information lives on our Town of Trumbull website. There's a link later in, in the presentation here. It's in the, the presentation package. It's live in a link on the Economic Development webpage of our Town of Trumbull webpage. And we will regularly update all of this. These are great resources for employers of all sorts. And we hope you'll take advantage of them. And folks on the panel, I'd ask you, you know, please feel free to add a link to our page on your page. Okay? So we're now going to just see if we have any questions from our attendees. We are, as promised, still within our one hour of session. So Bill, I wanted to see if, if, if we have, we have some attendees and we have some hands up and if you can help us with that. Let's see. Bear with us. We do have some hands up, so.
Mr. Griffith, you'll need to, um, there you go, confirm the panelist's promotion.
Hello. Hi.
Hi, hi Paul. How are you?
I'm doing fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What is your?
I was wondering if you could, uh, please put up the phone number, the contact list, which is at the very beginning of the program. Because I've written down some of the names there. I want to get the phone numbers for the worst place in the Kennedy Center.
Yes, we will put those back up. Thank you for asking. It's nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will do that. Are there any other folks in the audience that have a question or would like to any of our panelists or would like to discuss a need or something that they have to offer? Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment in our audience? Okay, at the moment I don't, I don't see anyone raising their hand, but we'll give it, we'll give it another minute. Oh, excuse me.
First selected, so I think that Joan wanted to make a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Joan. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, thanks for recognizing, I used my actual hand instead of, instead of the little yellow one. One of the other things I, uh, one of the other services we offer, we work with area schools and have young adults particularly in the summer, but really it's going year round. Where they train, it is no cost to you. We are funded by the school for them to work anywhere from 60 to 80 hours with a full coaching staff and they are just learning, they're doing career exploration. So if that's also something that you might be interested in taking advantage of, it's, uh, it's a win-win. It's, it's a pool of workers for you. And we provide, uh, like I said, the, um, the certificate of insurance. So there's no liability. And we have staff dedicated to watching, uh, you know, observing individuals. If you have three individuals in a particular location, there is going to be a staff person there the whole time. Even to, we, you know, we basically work with you on that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else attending or on the panel that would like to make any other comments? Carmen Yavas.
Hello, everyone. This is so exciting and I want to just thank you again for putting it together and to have it live on your website. So other businesses can access that whenever. I just wanted to mention that through the workplace that we help individuals or we have candidates that range from age 14 to as high as 80. Anyone that needs to be working in our 20 towns, we're here available and we understand the employer's needs for staff. We also, in that same line that we've heard today, that there's a lot of candidates. I mean, Mike alluded to a little bit about our, um, our job center and our services and the things that we do. A lot of people don't know over 15,000 people go through those doors every day looking for an opportunity. So we are here, we are ready and we want to help you. And I think that I was talking to Andy earlier when we were talking about what's the secret sauce? The secret sauce is relationships, right? Because there's no wrong way. Mike says this all the time. There's no wrong way to access services and we are one team. And that team is how do we help employers and how do we put people back to work faster? Thank you.
I always want Carmen on my team. She has got so much energy and, and she's so good at what she does. And if you're an employer listening in, um, she does an amazing job just connecting people to employment. I've worked with her over the years personally and seen her magic. So thank you, Carmen. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment before our first selection just closes out our program? And we put up the link again, this, all of this information lives on the Town of Trumbull website. There's a link to the presentation. There's a link to the university career office documents and to the job board documents and other resources we have up there for talent acquisition. So there's your link. Uh, I see there is a hand up. Oh, Rosa.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, anyone, small business, you're looking for assistance with recruitment. You know, we're here for you. So, you know, you can reach out to my team and we're definitely available to assist you with any job recruitments that you need.
Wonderful. Thank you, Rosa. Do we have anyone else? I just, I'm still seeing a hand up and I'm not sure. Okay, I think we're good. So first selection to Soro, you want to just close us out?
Thanks Rena. Before I close this out, I just want to apologize to Fred Petrosi. I, I forgot to announce him in the beginning. So Fred, uh, thank you. Thank you for being here. And thank you to all of our presenters for today's program. You just gave such important information and I'm sure all those who are watching today and those that'll watch in the future are going to find today's presentation very helpful in their search for staffing, retention of staff and assistance for your employees. So again, thank you all for taking the time out to be with us today. And thank you Rena for making this program and bringing it to our community. Uh, and thank you for emceeing. A great job as always. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great day, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.